Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo, and Festerson is absent.
Okay, we're ready now. I want to welcome everyone for being here today for this meeting of the Omaha City Council. I also have remarks, so that works well for everybody. If you're feeling a little sluggish, a little tired, don't worry, it's not just you. It's daylight savings happening to all of us, whether it's coffee, or energy drink, or soda that's not working right now. But there is some good news. Here at the end of the week, we have a couple local teams that will be playing in March Madness. And by then, hopefully, you will be rested up and ready to go. And I've also found out that if you're Catholic and you believe like I do, then dispensation is okay to indulge in corned beef this Friday. And one more important fact is that I talked to my colleague, Councilman Bagley, and he said we can all be Irish for one day, and that's Friday only. So I also want to make one more mention, that it's Councilmember Juanita Johnson's birthday tomorrow. Everybody send her an email and call her phone all day long and keep her busy, wishing her happy birthday. And Danny, did you want to recognize somebody today?
I do. Thanks, Mr. President. I have the great honor in place of Council President Festerson to speak to the YC League group that is here today. And it was the most joyful 45 minutes I've had since I've been on the city council to see young men and women here for three weeks, learning about democracy and the functions of our government. And it truly was a joy to see you all today, so I want to welcome you. Can we give them a round of applause for being here today?
Okay, and also a reminder, if you have any electronic devices to help us facilitate this meeting and move as swiftly as we can, if you would silence them at this time. Madam Clerk.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Okay.
Item, oh.
Sorry.
Item six, to consider a Class I liquor license for Chelotepe's restaurant located at 2308 N Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The public hearing and vote today is on a Jada item six. If you were here, come on down. Rosa, not to call you out. Just say your name and address.
Rosa Andjodin, and the address is 2308 N Street.
Thanks. And you're here to answer any questions we may have for you?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Want to make a motion. She's good. She's good.
On the record, though.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. We talked a little bit about this at pre-council today, and there were some some payments due and some schedules not being met, but I understand there might be a change in in the status of that, so if maybe someone from finance could just confirm that for the record.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yeah, as of right now, everything's settled up.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class I liquor license for El Vallarta Mexican restaurant located at 12405 West Center Road.
The public hearing and vote begins at this time for item seven. Proponents.
I'm Betsy Mata. My address is 11808 Dutch Hall Road, Omaha, Nebraska, 68142. And this is
I'm Casey Kate Serrano. My address is 2310 Park Crest Drive, Papillion, Nebraska, 68133.
Okay, and you're both just here to answer any questions if we have them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion and a second, roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for Geno's Bar and Grill located at 3821 North 167th Court, Suites 160 and 165.
Public hearing and vote begin at this time for item eight. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jerry Roble, and the address is 3134 North 158th Plaza Circle, Omaha, 68116.
Okay, thanks for being here. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thanks for being here.
Item nine, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district. To incorporate into that district, the property located at 3217 North 90th Street, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote begin at this time on item nine. If you're a proponent, come on down.
My name is Bahram Murpav. On behalf of Big O Auto LLC, trying to get a special use permit for automotive dealership.
Okay, what's your address?
3217 North 90th.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 10 and 11 can be considered together for property located at 3215 North 168th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, in ordinance to rezone property from DR District to R4 District. Item 11, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
The public hearing and vote begin at this time on items 10 and 11. Proponents, please.
Darwin Mourning, located at 16626 Leavenworth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118. Here to answer any questions you may have.
John Glenn from, address is 108 South 121st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154.
Okay, thank you for being here. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 12 and 13 can be considered together for property located at 3612 Leavenworth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, in ordinance to rezone this property from R8 District to TOD 2 MX District. And 13, in ordinance to rescind the ACI overlay district for this property.
Thank you. The public hearing and vote begin at this time for item 12 and 13. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, Omaha, Nebraska. Here with me is developer Charles Sullivan, and I answer any questions you might have. We are here asking for a change of zone from R8 to the TOD District. Really, this project could be completed inside the R8 zoning district. The really change zone request is driven by the city's overlay wanting this, everything kind of down here to be in this TOD District, which we're super supportive of. Encumbers this piece of property here. It was originally part of the main project. Oops, it's up there. Oops, other way. Sorry. This location here, it was originally part of this main building. This developer chose not to do it. Mr. Sullivan has purchased the property and is finishing off the project. 24 units, apartment complex. Obviously, the TOD, we can go more. I'm sure that would be desirable, and if we can figure that out, we will. We were at Planning Board, approved at Planning Board in January, and we asked for approval here today, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for being here. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Charlie, a couple of quick questions. Charlie, since I walked by you, I haven't seen you in about five months.
It's been a while.
Apologize, but it's good to have you here today.
Thank you.
And I wanted to personally thank you. I know you reached out to me in September. We scheduled coffee at Howling Hounds. You wanted to explain this project to me. You allowed me to change the time of our coffee because my schedule got crammed. You were very accommodating. And I know you reach out to the neighborhoods, you had meetings. And also, in my OPBD capacity, I know you reached out to me to try to get you connected with some people at the power company, OPBD. And I think that was helpful, so I'll be glad to support this today and appreciate again all the work you put in to this project and also the outreach you've done. So you don't have to comment, but I just wanted to thank you for coming down and and reaching out to me. It made a big difference for me just to understand what you were doing. And that, at least for this council member, is something I truly appreciate it. So thanks, Charlie. Best of luck to you.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. Charlie, if you could, in case Danny needs to get in hold of you in the future, could you say your name and address, please?
Charlie Sullivan, 11516 Miracle Hills, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Items 14 and 15 can be considered together for property located at 1111 Papillion Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 14, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 3 overlay district for this property. Item 15, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District.
Public hearing and vote are at this time on 14 and 15. Proponents, please.
Afternoon again, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 1009 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100 here in Omaha. Here on behalf of SGH Reglaze, this is a special use permit for 43,500 square foot office building, or office and warehousing use, roughly located at Mill Valley Road and Parkway Road. For reference, FISERV sits right over here as a relationship to this, this project. We've got a power line that kind of encumbers the site there. 15,000 square foot of this building will be for office, and 40,000 square foot of that will be for warehousing. We'll have 40 office employees at this location and 15 warehouse employees. Office will operate Monday through Friday, 8 through 5, and the warehouse will operate Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. About three trucks a week will come in and out of this location. So we do have two access points to circulate trucks through our site, back to the dock doors, and out. We were at Planning Board in February, and we were on consent agenda for approval. Asked for your approval on this project as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 16 through 27 were held on March 7, 2023. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 28 through 45 and 47 through 58 are today. We will be removing agenda item 46. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Going once. Okay, public hearing's closed. Thank you. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 46, resolution to approve the purchase from OPBD in the amount of 24,000 to install a service conductor to a new transformer pole and meter socket at NP Dodge Park Cricket Field.
Are there any proponents on agenda item 46? Seeing none, are there any opponents on 46? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Palermo.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 59, in ordinance to acquire private property for the CSO 212 64th Avenue and William Street Project.
The public hearing begins at this time on item 59. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 60, in ordinance to acquire private property for the 72nd Street at D Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Public hearing begins at this time on item 60. Proponents? Opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 61, in ordinance to acquire private property for the UNMC Saddle Creek Campus Public Improvements Project.
Public hearing begins at this time for item 61. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 62, in ordinance to approve the Greenwood Building Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing begins at this time on agenda item 62. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Johnson. Happy birthday. My birthday is on Friday, so it's a good time of the year. Thank you, thank you. Does it need to be turned on?
And then, before you get started, name and address, please.
My name is Kyle Keith. Address is 2210 Worth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am a partner at NOC Redeveloping Group. Just want to say good afternoon again to everybody in the council. We are here for the artif application for our project. We want to thank you guys for your continued support throughout this whole, throughout this whole journey. Also, we would like to thank our partners, Sparks CFI, Holland Basham, Blair Freeman, and the Planning Department, specifically Bridget Hadley and Don Seaton. They have been instrumental in this process for us. And I apologize, my partner cannot be here with us, but Katrina Adams, she's my partner in this project, and I want to give her our kudos as well. Our project is a two-story mixed-use development along the 24th Street corridor, with the corridor housing and retail space catering to the needs of the community. The importance of this, these funds cannot be overstated. They support projects like ours, which are designed to help accessibility to the community they are developed in. The current condition of the building on 24th Street is this. After the redevelopment, we will have side improvements, new storefronts, and other things that would translate into this building being on 24th Street in an area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the area, but it's pretty vacant and underserved. So I believe that this project will bring some validation to the area and hopefully some more foot traffic to continue with more development in the future. Again, we just want to say thank you for your consideration, and I'm here for any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. Mr. President, I just wanted to acknowledge both you, Katrina and Kyle, for your efforts in restoring that building that does have a historical significance
Yes, ma'am.
in the, on 24th Street, more importantly, North Omaha. As you pointed out, the area has been somewhat vacant for a long period of time. And I really think that with this restoration, keeping the historical significance to the building is definitely going to be an improvement and garner support for future endeavors on the corridor. So again, thank you.
No problem at all. We share your sentiments. I think, you know, in this year, in the years past, and moving forward, I don't think there's, has been as many opportunities for development in these kind of projects moving forward at you guys' disposal, so we're thankful for being able to navigate that process and continue to do some more stuff in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Item 63, in ordinance to acquire private property for the Alvee Sports Complex relocation.
Public hearing is today for item 63. Proponents, please.
Hello, members of the council. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 64, in ordinance to approve an agreement with OCLC for the purchase of a five-year subscription renewal for cataloging and interlibrary loan services.
The public hearing begins at this time for item 64. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Item 65, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with Douglas County for GIS department services.
The public hearing begins at this time for item 65. Proponents, please. Seeing none, opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 66, in ordinance to approve an agreement with KJ Crossroads Venture LLC for the Crossroads redevelopment area.
The public hearing begins at this time for agenda item 66. Proponents, please.
Mr. President and councilmembers, Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. Here on behalf of KJ Crossroads, I have with me today Emily O'Connor and Chip James from Lockwood Development, Jessica Thomas from my office, and Joe Flaxbeard from Lampar Nielsen Associates. We have not been back down before, before the council for some time on the Crossroads project, so we thought we might take an opportunity today to maybe update folks and give the public a little flavor of what's going on over there. So Emily's gonna give you a little update, and we're happy to answer any questions about the agenda item today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Emily O'Connor, 12910 Pierce Street, Suite 1110, 68144. Have with me the plat here to walk through. So this 2022, 2023 has really been focused on horizontal infrastructure. Like Jim said, we haven't been down here for a little while, so I wanted to give you guys an update on what's happening on the site. If you've driven by, you're seeing some of the work happen, so as of right now, to date, we have demoed the entire site. We have a little bit of demo that is left to do next to Target. That will be coming next year. And then we have graded the entire site. Sewer and sanitary wrapped up this February, so that is complete now. And paving
Try, try the other one. Sorry, I was supposed to tell everybody not to touch them, but we almost made it.
Okay, all right, there we go. So paving is gonna take care of all the internal streets, which are all public streets except for a little stretch by Target, and then we have a private drive that will not be going in yet. So when we talk about public streets, we have 75th Avenue, which runs from Dodge Street to Cass Street. We have 74th Avenue, which is from Cass, to Chicago Street. We have 75th Street that runs, and runs into Capital Street. We have 74th Avenue that comes in off of Dodge. Chicago Street from 72nd to 75th Avenue, and then Capital Street that runs from 74th to 75th Avenue. All of those are public streets. That paving will start here in May, and will wrap up by August is what we anticipate. From there, we have also starting Dodge Street improvements. So that is actually a dual-turn lane into, from Dodge Street headed east, and dual-turn lanes into the project off of 74th Street. We also are widening Dodge, taking some, some property into our property to the, to the north, excuse me. So that Dodge Street gets widened on the, on the side here, in front of Target and in front of where the mall used to be. So those improvements are contracted and are starting in April. So part of the reason why we're down here today is really for our redevelopment agreement that we're working on with the city. This is a portion of that with the CIP bonds. And it was critical for us to get Dodge Street work going, just because if we didn't turn the contractor loose by April, we were gonna miss the entire construction season, just because their, their plate was full and then prices changed. So we're down here today asking for a portion of, of the CIP that would go towards this, this improvement. As well, that's currently happening right now, too, is Cass Street. We had some, some work to do on Cass Street. There's a median going in, the street's getting widened. That work is already underway. And then shortly after paving's done, we'll get water to site, and we have some power that will go to the site, too. So really, by the end of this year, we should have most of all the city improvements and public, public improvements wrapped up, either completed, in progress, or, or about to be completed. So that's really been our focus right now. We have probably another 16 months of infrastructure to get done. There are some possibilities, you know, depending on our users, we're, we're kind of targeting a Q1, Q2, a 2024 start on some of the project. And then we'll, we'll schedule things appropriately. Those different buildings, there's some that are very high in density, some are single-story buildings, so we'll, we'll program construction schedule appropriately. Some of those buildings are gonna take a little longer to build than others, so that's an overall update for you guys. I'm here. I've got Joe Flaxbeard with Lampar Nielsen that can answer some further details about the infrastructure, too. So we're here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I don't see any lights, but what I would say, if President Festerson was here, he would say a lot of things, and then he would say, "Thank you, and thanks for the update." So I just shortened that up a bit.
I like it.
Appreciate you being here. We're really looking forward to it, all of us, for the city of Omaha, so.
Appreciate it. We're excited as well, so.
Great, thank you. Public hearing's closed.
Item 67, in ordinance to approve a lease agreement with Dew Space East Communication and Opposition.
The public hearing begins today on item 67. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Louis Humennis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm a proponent. Sorry, there was people here in the way.
I support this because it's part of the project management that is going on so that DoSpace can come back to the Seventy-second and Dodge to be co-mingled with the Central Library. Excuse me.
Take your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. DoSpace is very important for the community. It has accessibility that you can't find anywhere else. For example, the computers that are available are available until eight p.m., Monday through Friday. And with all of these projects going on, I'm glad that DoSpace found a place to continue their operations. Because for me, I'm going to keep using it even though they're moving out of their current location over to Ninety-Eth and Fort. So that's why I support it, because just you've got to keep the ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was a proponent, but we're still on opponents. Are there any other opponents here today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, item sixty-eight through seventy-seven do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration. Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.